Over 35,000 Missouri educators and over 3.1 million educators in our nation, who all unite around the belief that every child deserves a great public school. So we're hosting this forum tonight because we're aware that the role that the school board plays is critical in ensuring that every child has a great public school. So I want to thank some people this evening before we begin. First of all, Monica Miller, who is our PAC chair, who just informally started formally. Monica and many of her PAC team put this event together, so we're very appreciative of that. I also want to thank our members for the work that they do every day for the students of Columbia Public Schools, and then coming out this evening to support this event and learn more about the candidates for school board. I also want to thank the many community members and press that are in the room and all the support that you give to our schools. And of course, I want to thank the candidates, not only for being here tonight, but also for just being willing to take part in a political campaign these days and being willing to volunteer your time to something that is so important to our entire community. So thank you very much for that. And at this time, I will turn the program over to Monica Miller.
Thank you so much, President Steinhoff. And again, audience, thank you so much for your participation. We have with us two outstanding teachers with us and members who will be your moderators this evening. We have Mrs. Courtney Gonzalez, who is a math teacher over at Hickman High School. She teaches calculus and precal. Did you say it? There you go. I stopped at Algebra II because I'm wise. And that's my level right there. And we have with me my colleague here at Paxton Keely Elementary School, Mrs. Shelley Thielin, who teaches 5th grade. Both ladies are very active in our association and in our district. Ms. Thielin is a very proud member of the PTA and helps out at the state level, national level? She's the president at Hickman High School. There you go, Q's. This is who you see about those cookies. And also a proud member of Moms Demand Action. And Ms. Gonzalez is our coordinator for the minority teachers of the NEA and gets us active and involved. So we are very honored to have them with us. We have our three lovely candidates, and we should be able to wrap up about 8 o'clock. We do have some members who are coming around with cards and pencils. Please feel free to write down a question and get them to our welcomeers, and they will then bring the questions up to our moderators. Real quick before we begin, if I could have the PAC team stand up, please, so that everybody, I want to acknowledge you all. Thank you. They keep me staying. They keep me grounded. Let's have a round of applause for you. Thank you so much. And without any delay, let's get started.
Good evening. My name's Courtney Gonzalez. As Monica mentioned, I'm a teacher at Hickman High School, and I have the pleasure of asking the first question tonight. We have three candidates here with us, Mr. Willoughby, Mrs. Streedy Willhoyt, and Mr. Atkins. We're going to go in that order for the first question. You've been given this question in advance, just to remind you, you have one minute to answer. Please share something unique about yourself that you feel voters would like to know, and why do you wish to serve a term on the Columbia Board of Education? Mr. Willoughby, we'll begin with you.
Good evening, and thank you all for coming out tonight and coming in and asking your questions for us to share about our candidacies and why we're running for school board. Something really interesting about me is I'm an Army brat, and due to that, I was taught by my dad a lot of things. And three of those things that are a part of this core of my candidacy and my campaign are the Army values of duty, respect, and selfless service. And that is why I want to be serving as a school board member, and I can't wait to answer your questions and share a little bit more about my goals and more of my values as well. So thank you guys for coming.
Well, good evening. My name is Della Streedy Willhoyt, and I was born and raised in southeast Monmouth, Missouri. I come from a family of 12, and nine girls, three boys. Education has always been a part of my life, and by education being a part of my life, I started from the con feels to the PhD, and what happened there is that I had dedicated teachers to help me along the way. So therefore, my natural next step was to use my voice to advance the education for all children in our area, and hopefully, we can touch each other throughout the United
Thank you very much. I would also thank everybody for coming tonight. It's a pleasure to see some familiar faces and meet some new faces. My name is Jay Atkins. I am one of the candidates for school board. My answer to this question really is one and the same. I am, I think, the only candidate running this cycle that currently has students in Columbia Public Schools. My wife of 17 years, Haley, and I have four kids, and we have three of those are in Columbia Public Schools. The fourth one will be starting next year. So we are very invested in our children's education, and it is important to us to make sure that we are, that our schools are representing and doing the job they need to, not only for our kids, but for all the kids in the district. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and I look forward to the questions. And with that, I will hand it back to our moderator.
Thank you very much. Hello, candidates. Turn one. Okay. So just a reminder, if we're checking our phones, it's because we're checking the time. We're not texting our family members during this event. And so, as Mrs. Gonzalez said, we're going to go in an order. So we will begin with our second candidate in a rotation, and that would be Mrs. Streedy Willhoyt. As a reminder, from here on out, I have two minutes to answer the remaining questions. At any time, if you want us to repeat the question, please feel free to ask. School safety is a huge national concern. It is a multifaceted problem, ranging from common sense gun laws to site security to mental health evaluation and treatment. What are your ideas for improving school security in CPS in each of these domains? And I can repeat that if you want me to, because I don't mind.
Yes, well, what I want to start off with is to say that, yes, safety is very, very important in this school system. And so what we need to do, of course, we know about all of the things that have been going on, particularly in the last 10 years, on the safety of our children. And so securities has been beefed up, and we are well aware that many times, people are saying that in order to have safety, we must have guns in school and so forth. I think that before we go that far, we must first look at some of the safety rules, some of the requirements. I think it is fine that we have these security guards. I notice that you have had the security at the door and so forth. And so those are the beginnings, but I think that we're going to have to do a little more. But we cannot do it very hasty. We're going to have to talk about it, find out what is the best thing for our children, and then go forth with it. We cannot push safety under the rug like it is a small issue. It is a very, very big issue, and I don't think that we can solve it in a minute or two or a day or two. But I do think that we have to communicate, we have to build the trust, and then we have to do what is best for our children. I'll just go ahead and stop there since I seen that I have a 30-second left, and perhaps I will talk a little bit more about it in the other questions. So thank you for asking that question.
Thank you. So I know that this is, I don't know if this is called a forum or a debate, but I don't know. If it keeps up like this, I don't think it's going to be very contentious, because I agree with everything that Mr. Streedy Willhoyt just said. I would add a couple of things. First is, it is a big issue, and thankfully, I think CPS is doing a pretty good job right now. As a parent, we see it every day. Our kids are two elementary schools, schoolers attend Ridgeway. That had a very open feel to it. They didn't have locking classroom doors, and that was a safety concern, and we went through and retrofitted that building during the summer to harden it a little bit and make sure that our kiddos are safe. We do a great job of sending out text notifications to parents when there's an incident at school. I like to see that. I do think it's important to note that we are, two things here. One, we're constrained a little bit. Some of these are national questions, some of them are state questions, and we're constrained a little bit by the laws we're given, by the federal government and by the state. But what we also need to do is remember, and this is one of the pillars of my campaign, is local control is a big question here. What we want to make sure we don't do is get ourselves in a situation where the safety of our schools is being dictated to us from either Jefferson City or Washington, DC. So we need to make sure that we're engaging in the process to make sure that we get to put common sense solutions in our schools here in Columbia that make sense for us locally. Now, at this point, I'll say, I don't know what those are, and I think Della's right. We need to talk about it. We don't need to be afraid of this issue. We need to confront it head-on. But on the positive column, I think we are doing a very good job. There's always room for improvement, but as a parent, it's great to see some of the things that are going on.
Mr. Willoughby, do you want me to repeat the question?
No, thank you though. Just as Della and Jay have said, I'm kind of going to charm along and echo the same things. I think just kind of adding into the conversation and the information that they have said is how we go about making sure that we keep that local control is by going in and having community engagement on the board level. And that is a core tenet of my candidacy and my campaign, is being constantly and persistently present and engaged in this community by having dialogues with our parents, dialogues with our teachers and our students, and with our community members. Because by having those conversations and taking those stakeholders in to talk about what are best safety practices, what are the best safety measures here at our schools and here in Columbia, we are going to be able to make the best decisions that are for us and not what is just the decisions that are being made in Jeff City or in Washington, DC, trying to tell us how to run our own school district. Because at the end of the day, they are our kids, they're our students, it is our district, and we are able to know what is going to be the best practices when working with the stakeholders and those that have the knowledge of safety. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Atkins, we will begin with you for this next question. As a member of Missouri NEA, we are committed to rigorous learning standards, decentralized and shared decision-making, diverse educational offerings, and the removal of restrictive requirements within public schools. Charter schools serve students and the public interest when they are authorized and held accountable by the locally elected school board. There is currently a proposed bill, HCS HB 581, that would allow charter schools in Missouri to be sponsored by outside entities. The question, do you support charter schools that are not held accountable to local school boards? And if so, do you believe that it is appropriate for a school board to take a public stand against issues such as this, and how do you recommend they do this?
No, yes, and engage with the guys in Jefferson City. All right? Now I'll expand on that a little bit. The question was, do I support charter schools that are not overseen by some local entity, but that can be overseen by outside interests? The answer is no, that's foolish, right? They don't know Columbia, they don't know our students, they don't know what our needs are. And that's why we have a school board, to serve the needs of all the kids in Columbia, right? So the answer to your first question is no. The second part of your question was, do I support charter schools if there is oversight? The answer to that is yes. Is that about right? I'm paraphrasing. Yeah. Do I support them if there is oversight? Yes, I do. And I had a conversation with Roger McKinnney back there and back taking notes. He and I talked about it the other day. But I certainly do. Flexibility in education is key to making sure we reach all the students. And we have a responsibility, I believe, to all the students in our community, those that attend Columbia Public Schools and those who have made other educational choices. I do think that we have a responsibility to the children in our community to make sure that they are given educational opportunities that are going to allow them to thrive. And I believe that there are some environments where a charter school can better serve the needs of kids than the public school system can, because they have the ability to be more targeted, they're a little more flexible, they can cater to a specific group, and I think that can be valuable. But it certainly doesn't need to be done at the expense of our public schools, and that requires local oversight. Finally, the way I would go about having that conversation is I would get down to Jefferson City and talk to all those idiots, right? I know them, I've worked there. I apologize to all of our wonderful representatives and senators and elected officials in Jefferson City, but I spend a lot of time in Jefferson City. I know the sponsor of the bill. I know that the bill you're talking about was voted out of committee along party lines, and it's going to get time on the floor because that committee chair was put in place by the Speaker of the House. And I understand how that process works. So there is still time. If it's a bad bill, we can engage in that process. Now, we can go have conversations with those folks now and make sure that our concerns as a district are being addressed, and we can make the changes we need to that bill. I'm talking really fast to get it all in, because I'm done.
Would you mind just repeating the question real quick?
Yes. So first, do you support charter schools that are not held accountable to local school boards? And if so, do you believe that it is appropriate for a school board to take a public stand against issues such as this, and how do you recommend they do this?
So, no. I agree with Jay. I do not think that there should be charter schools without local district oversight. That oversight is really important, because what is the best part about public schools and public school districts is the fact that y'all, as a community, get to vote and elect school board members who help make decisions, but also are supposed to be listening to you and having you informed then on what is the best decision to be made. And then collectively, working with the administrators and the teachers to instill the best curriculums and the best ways of making sure that we're reaching our academic goals, and also creating a school environment that is welcoming, inviting, and also accepting of all of our students and of all of our teachers. When it comes to the school board advocating against things like that, is that correct in paraphrasing that? I would say that that goes into the conversation of the school board having, the school board members talking about that, talking to the community members to see if that is what they're wanting to have happen, and then collaborating in with the community and as a school board and with our administrators on what are the best practices of doing that. So, and I yield my time.
Thank you.
Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm fine. The HB 5881 bill, it proposed expanding the charter schools in certain areas. And you asked if we support charter schools. My answer is no, I do not. And I'm going to come at it from a different perspective. I feel that we need to be very careful on the charter schools, because I believe that it could help people receive a preference in the school and not look at diversity issues. I think that the geographical end could make a difference, and I think that if you do not look at that piece of the pie, then it can become imbalanced. Because as charter schools, as you well know, they are sponsored school with pay and so forth. I do believe that we should have a voice in it, that the school board should have something to say, because it may change where your child go. Now, if you believe that you want a charter school, then I believe that you should move carefully and cautiously. I think you need to know a little bit more about the bill, how it would impact your child, even the subdivision that you're in. But it is a freedom of right, but I do believe that if we are going to look out for all of our children, we have to look at the charter schools and not just one angle of it. We need to look at it from the diversity, we need to look at it from the socioeconomic status, as well as, is it an overall good bill? Because you just hearing a tiny bit of it. So lastly, I want to say that before we move and say yay yay on the charter school, let us understand the bill a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Mr. Willoughby, we're back to you. With so many mental health resources located in Columbia, our schools have seen an increase in serving families and students who lived into our town to receive such support. Yet classroom teachers and aides have very little to no training in helping to serve families and teach students who suffer from mental health issues. How will you help the board and our district provide support to teachers and families of students who have mental health concerns?
That's a very good question, and so thank you for asking it. It's a really difficult thing. It's really hard to pinpoint what are the best supports and what is the best ways to address it, because it is really at an individual level. There are things that we know are really, they work, but it doesn't always work for everybody else. As an individual who deals with mental health issues and deals with learning about my ADHD right at the end of my undergraduate career, it's something that with graduate school has been a difficulty of learning how to cope and deal with that difference of brain chemistry that I have. And so when it comes to helping our teachers address it in the classroom and with our students, I think it really comes at collaborating with our community and the resources that are out there and figuring out how can we set up programs or collaborations and partnerships that we can put into professional development times or offer it for our teachers who are wanting to take that time and to learn those skills to implement them. But really, when it comes to specific programming and specific actions, I really do think that that comes into talking to our community and talking to the specialists that know how to do those practices. Because as a school board member, that is not my specialty, that is not going, that is not at all what I'm going to do. Am I going to look at the research? Am I going to listen to the specialists? Am I going to listen to the community? Yes. But at the end of the day, I have to do that to then make a decision. I can't just go and make a decision on what's going to be the best practice, because right now, I don't. But by talking to those individuals, that's how we get there. So thank you.
I need you to repeat the question.
Happy to do that. The short question is, how will you help the board and our district provide support to teachers and families of students who have mental health concerns?
I think that so many times, mental health issues have been swept under the table. I believe that we have a duty to ourselves and to the teachers to find any resources that they can. I believe that many times, we don't want to admit there are mental health issues, and by the time that those issues are treated, it is a little late. So we need the resources in the schools. We need specialists in the schools. We need counselors in the school. We need to make sure that the student with a special need have just the equal opportunity as anyone else. And if you make those opportunities late, then it's too late for that child. And so I don't know if we have the resources. I believe that you have to tell us. You're going to have to talk to us more and, in a quiet way, demand that we pay attention to the mental illness of our children. And so as a school board member, I too will say, I don't have all the answers there, but I am willing to listen, I am wanting to see the resources, but anytime you want to help and do other things, you always have to remember, what type of source funding do we have? And is it important enough? And I think it is. I think it's important enough that we find source funding for the mental illness, and I'll stop at that.
Thank you. You don't need to repeat the question. So it's actually good to hear. We've come a long way, right? When I went to elementary school and even junior high and high school, they didn't, we didn't diagnose kids with ADD back then. In fact, what they did to me was put a cardboard box on my desk so that I couldn't see any of the kids around me and distract them. So then I, of course, turned it into a little submarine and poked holes in it. And fortunately, we're beyond that, right? Excuse me. So what do we need to do? This starts with listening to our teachers, right? Our teachers, you guys, there's a lot of teachers in here, you know this. Teachers are in the classroom every day with these kids. Teachers know what's going on with their kids. Teachers are aware of when a kid is, you know, maybe just acting up a little bit or when there's a more serious problem. So we need to empower our teachers to start making those decisions, and then we need to give our teachers a very defined path to move that complaint up through the chain so that we can get those kids the resources they need. What does that mean? I don't know exactly. Maybe we need a mental health liaison at the district level, maybe we need it some in schools. I know it's always, I know there's always a resource question. I don't have the answer right now. I don't know if that's a whole new FTE, or if we're going to move some FTEs around, or I'm not sure how we're going to address it, but that's what we need to do. We need to rely on our teachers, we need to give a path up the chain to make sure problems are being addressed, and we need somebody that is dedicated to understanding these problems and then can liaise not only with the teachers and not only with the healthcare professionals, but also with that student and also with the community. Lake made a great point. We've got some good resources in this community. The, was it Boone County Family Resource Center is a great place to start, and we have a lot of other organizations that we could work with as well. So that's how I would do it, and I think my time is up. I'm a lawyer, by the way. I get paid by the word tip, so I apologize.
I don't. Next question, we're going to start with you, Mrs. Streedy Willhoyt. Columbia Public Schools prides itself on the quality of education we provide students in our district. Yet our pay scales rank among the lowest for districts of our size in the state of Missouri, and Missouri ranks lowest, one of the lowest across the nation. As a result, we lose many talented teachers to other districts for better pay. How would you improve recruitment and retention for the best possible teachers and educational professionals for our students?
Let me say right off that I think that teachers need higher pay. Period. Now, saying that, there are always people saying, how are we going to pay for it? Let's set that aside, because I believe that we can recruit the best teachers. We have the universities here, that our teachers are trained very well, but the starting salaries start at $36,000, and then at the master's level, it's at $37,000. We are all saying that our kids are priceless. Guess what? You were kids once, too, and therefore, the teachers taught you. So on the recruitment end, we need to help the teachers to get paid higher. If you do not pay our teachers higher, they will leave. They will leave for a better job. And then the recruitment end of it, we should be talking with the universities and let them know that we want our students to stay, and from there, let those, the teachers know that we care about you and that even though many people are going to say, it is a passion, and why should they get paid? Well, coaches have passions, too, and they get paid. I have passions, too, and I get paid. And so I think that I can say, the recruitment and the retention, I can help. So my bottom line is, let's get going and pay our teachers a little bit better, because after all, we are saying that our children are our future, and we are the epitome of good, dedicated teachers.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, right? And I assume everybody's going to say the same thing, like the pay stinks, right? And I've got some, I have some personal experience with this. I don't know if you guys have been following the news. I spoke about this once before, but I graduated law school with a law degree, thought I was going to go out and make a bunch of money, took my dream job. I was a prosecutor at the Attorney General's Office in the Sexually Violent Predator Unit. I went all around the state locking up perverts. It was the best job I have ever had in my whole entire life, and it paid $32,000 a year, and I couldn't pay my electric bill. So I left, right? Fortunately, I went on to find something else that I enjoy doing that pays better, but the point is, I left because it was lousy pay. I couldn't support a family, and we don't want that for our teachers. So of course, we always have to find ways to pay our teachers more. That is, I think that's the case. It's got to be the case, and if I'm elected, I will constantly pursue that. Okay? So that's a baseline. But then the question is, hey, there's not money there, so what are we going to do to recruit and keep teachers, right? That's the next logical question. Well, teachers are like anybody else. A lot of them are doing the job because they love it. In fact, most of them are doing it because they love it. So let's make sure that we create an environment for our teachers where they continue to love their job and are willing to put up with the lousy pay until we can find a way to raise their pay, right? And how do you do that? Well, you make sure, for one, get out of their business a little bit, okay? I've got a lot of friends that are teachers, and probably the biggest complaint I hear from my teacher friends is that they're micromanaged in their classroom. I don't think that's a really good idea. I don't think that's a good way to run a school district. I think we should be in the business of finding and hiring great teachers, giving them the tools they need to do their job, and then getting out of their way and letting them teach their kids, right? So they want to be, I think, I think what we want to do is create an environment where teachers are valued, they have the freedom to run their classrooms, they feel supported, and they have and they have an actual voice within the district, within the administration, when they have something that, when they need recourse on something. So, you know, that's where we start. We got to make the pay better, but we also have to make sure we create an environment that teachers want to teach in.
So, I'm going to get to the pay question at the end. When you look over the survey data that goes out to teachers and you look at the past five years, there's been a decline in teachers feeling valued, feeling like they are, what they bring to the table is seen by their supervisor as something that is contributing to their schools. They are at a very dismal level, the decline of them recommending other people to come and work in this district, along with them feeling like they are in their environment, in their school environment. It has declined as well in the past five years, about like 8% of them just feeling welcomed in general. So, when it comes to retainment and keeping the best and the brightest, that's our major issue right there. Yes, salary, yeah. And that's why I'm going to talk about it right at the end of my time. But I do want to point that out, is that if our teachers don't feel like they're valued, if our teachers don't feel welcomed, if our teachers are not seeing that what they're bringing to the table is valued and seen as the gold like it is, because it is, they are helping raise, they are teaching our kids and making them the smartest and the brightest and making sure that this district shines like nobody else's and make sure that we become an example for the state. So, when it comes to, now, when it comes to salaries, I think that we need to work as hard as we can to push Jeff City to put more funding in public education. And because we at the local level are working really, really hard, and we are, we have a citizenry that really loves to fund education. But at some point, we can't just keep asking them and stuff like that. And so, at some point, they might not want to give more, and we don't want to have that kind of relationship. So, we have to work with Jeff City, because I would like to see us move in incremental ways to the national average, not just above the state average, but getting to the national average, which is about $52,000. So, and that's my time.
It seems every organization has a mission centered around equity, and Columbia Public Schools is no different. Education is the great equalizer, and yet, in a district of our size, it is important that we are aware of inequities within our own system. At last month's board meeting, several constituents spoke to concerns with our district related to equity. Do you have concerns about inequity within our district? And if so, how will you help to address them? If you aren't aware of specific cases, how will you address issues of equity that are brought to you?
Okay. I'm going to give this a shot without asking you to repeat it. All right. So, yes, there is a problem with equity. I mean, you can't look, no rational person can look at the data and think that in Columbia there is not a problem with equity, all right? So, at a baseline, we have a problem. Here's the really bad news, is I don't have a magic bullet. I don't know. I do know some things that we can do, and this is my number one campaign platform. I talk about it every opportunity, and it is...